Let's call the Finance Committee to Order. This is February 15th. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Any motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda and approval of minutes of February 8th, 2016 as proposed.
This is an amended agenda, Dave. If you would read that.
I did not see the approval amended agenda. So the one I'm looking at isn't current?
It is current, but the one that was published is incorrect.
Can we just tell what the changes were?
Okay. And so the changes were from Street Department. The amount that was estimated at $2,798 is now $7,324.39 for differential leaking excessively. That must be some leak. And we're going to add an item for emergency to acquire additional software that'll enable staff to troubleshoot and fix diesel engines. That's for the central garage. And the amount of $4,625 for the engine diagnostic adapters and software updates.
Thank you. Did I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. We have motioned a second on the agenda and minutes. Excuse me. Any questions? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. So may we take the travel requests?
We have eight travel requests tonight. As follows. Four Wilder Police Officers to attend the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau Training Conference in Okobosia, April 25th through the 27th, not to exceed $740. Sergeant Bowe, Sergeant Farmer, P.O. Bovey, P.O. Brunnell to attend a class US PCA certification for K-9 teams, Manchester, Iowa, April 11th through 13th, not to exceed $505. Lieutenant Campbell to attend a class Impact and Influence, St. Paul, Minnesota, March 6th through the 8th, not to exceed $340. Lieutenant Campbell to attend a class Stress, Trauma, and Burnout, destination St. Paul, Minnesota, May 1st through the 3rd, not to exceed $340. Greg Alhelm, Plans Examiner, Jess Seibel, Property Safety Inspector, to attend a class Intro to 2015 International Building Code, Madison, Wisconsin, April 3rd through the 5th, not to exceed $1,755. Justin Gade, Ryan Anderson, John Holler III, Dana Clement, Mike Beerbauer of Sewer Maintenance to attend the 20th Annual IAWEA Collection Systems Specialty Conference. Marshalltown, Iowa, March 4th, not to exceed $250. Gary Luck, Dave Ross, Alan De La Gardel, Joe Jones, Jr., from Sewer Maintenance to attend the 20th Annual IAWEA Collection Systems Specialty Conference, Marshalltown, March 3rd through the 4th, not to exceed $480. Lastly, Kent Quinn, John Hyman, Kevin Hunstling, ICT, to attend 2014 NEC Changes Seminar in Waterloo, March 4th, not to exceed $795.
Second.
We have a motion a second on all travel requests. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schmidt.
Dr. Trelka, could I ask you, that first item, sending the four officers to the training April 25th through the 27th, it says, develop plans on how to combat traffic-related problems that include traffic and alcohol enforcement. Can you explain that a little bit?
For the very first item?
Yes, sir.
Dan Trelka, Director of Safety. This is through the GTSB grants that the state provides us, and it's a requirement that we send individuals to this conference for these training and intoxicated driving, speeding, and other traffic enforcement issues. It's a requirement of the grant. And basically, we pay these costs up front, and then the state reimburses us. But if we don't send officers to this conference, to this training, the state won't provide us the tens of thousands of dollars they typically do every year to engage in these traffic safety enforcement initiatives.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That motion passes. Pre-auths?
Pre-authorizations. We have building maintenance, $13,920 for purchase of 160 light fixtures for five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Building maintenance, $1,750 for a DRM 1060 Canon scanner for building inspection department. Central garage, $4,625 for engine diagnostic adapters and software updates. Engineering, $4,185.48 for AutoCAD Infrastructure Design Suite Software Support. Leisure Services, $1,931.20 for trees to be planted downtown. Leisure Services, $24,168.68 for trees to be planted in several parks. Sullivan Park, Highland Park, Highland Square, and Gates Park. Planning, $2,220 for asbestos removal at southeast entry. Flooring for old Wonder Bread facility, 325 Commercial Street. Police, $2,430, $30.70 plus $15 shipping for four net wireless access points and maintenance agreement. Police, $3,200 plus $50 shipping to repair pole camera and replace new IP camera. Street Department, $7,324.39 for differential leaking excessively. Street Department's, $7,495.73 for accident repair for 1-9-1-4-2-0. Traffic Operations, $18,852.21 for 15 31-foot street light poles and 8-foot arms. Traffic Operations, $6,510 for two EPAC traffic signal controllers.
Bruce?
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion a second on the pre-auths. Is there any discussion or questions in regards to those?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could we get some explanation on the trees for Leisure Services, $24,000? What is our program for replacing trees, I guess? How many trees is that? Or is it an annual event that we do in that amount? Or?
Sure. Paul Etting, Leisure Services Director. This amount is for trees that are going to be planted, as was read off in several parks. But this is part of an annual grant we get from Mid-American Energy. So they have a grant program that we utilize almost every year to replace trees. And in this case, most of these are replaced due to the Emerald Ash ore, trees that have been replaced that are dying or will be dying.
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That motion passes. And I'll make a motion to approve the budget line item amendments that are on file with the City Clerk's office, and also pay the bills this week. They are $680,736.46. That's 680,736.46.
Second.
We have a motion a second on the bills payment. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes as well.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Hello, everyone. It is 5:30. It's time for our regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
All right. Thank you. We have a full council this evening. If everyone would please stand or sit how you feel for our moment of silence. All right. Thank you. This evening, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be read by Julie Snyder, our Housing Authority Director. She is not here. All right. I think I will lead then. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agendas proposed, and also the minutes of February 8th, 2016 regular session as proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have an agenda. All right. What a pleasure this evening to swear in some new police officers. Dan, would you join me up front? We'd like to call up Mr. Andrew Sears, Tindo, Mr. Northrup, and Mr. Ayers as well. And any family member that would like to come up as well?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have the family member or significant other who's going to present their badge. I'll introduce the candidates to our public and everybody that's here. And then after Mayor Hart swears the candidate in and they become a police officer for the city of Waterloo, their loved one will present them with the badges that we have. And all four of these candidates are currently police officers or deputy sheriff elsewhere. And that, you know, it's not tough to come into Waterloo and be a police officer without any experience, because sometimes our duties can be challenging here. But we're proud to engage in the duties that we do. It's an honorable profession, and we proceed with nobility. But it also saves us a tremendous amount of money, since we don't have to send any one of these candidates to the police academy. That can cost several thousand dollars per candidate. So we have Andrew Sears, who was a Blackhawk County Deputy with his wife Abby. We have Andrew Tyndale with his wife Ally. Andrew was an Ankeny Police Officer. His wife is the daughter of one of our lieutenants, Brent Sirksona. Keaton Northrup with his girlfriend Sherry. Keaton came from Albia, Iowa. I did not know where that was until we did his background investigation. He's been there 18 months. And we have Jordan Ayers, who comes to us from LaPorte City with his wife Katie. And Jordan's been with LaPorte City for four years. So after Mayor Hart swears all of you in, I will hand the badges to your significant other. After your loved one gets sworn in, please hand the badge to them. Don't try to pin it on. We've had some accidents, and we don't want working comp issues immediately, so.
Around here or around here?
Why don't all of you, once I get out of the way, you can line up right in front of the podium here, right in front of the horseshoe.
All right. So if you will all stand and, okay. All right. If you will all stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the position of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of the position of a police officer.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
And that will make it official. Jordan? Congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. All right. Thank you.
All right. That's it. Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's 1A through 2C. And within that is the bills payment. The bills payment this week is $680,736.46.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, you can stay around for the council meeting. It's pretty exciting.
I think they got the word.
All right. Next time.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions about the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. Item number two, let me see, we have any appointments or anything on?
I don't think so.
All right. Item number two in the public hearings?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2016 Sherwood Recreation Area Phase Two Improvements, contract number 904.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any objections or support on file?
There were none.
There were none? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in support or against this particular item? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion in to close the hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions on this item? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file, and instruct the City Clerk to read bids and refer to Leisure Services for review.
Second.
All right. Motion carries with the proper second. Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
All right. The bid estimate for this project was $200,000. There were five bids. The first bid was from Lodge Construction Incorporated at Clarksville, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $141,153.25. The second bid was from Evergreen Lawn Care and Landscape LLC of Dyersville, Iowa. The bid bond was in the form of a check for $7,606.7606.00. The bid amount was for $152,120.152,120.00. The third bid was from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5%. The bid amount was for $166,144.166,144.00. The fourth bid was from Veeth Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $142,964.142,964.00. The final bid was from Boulder Contracting of Grundy Center, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the total bid amount was for $169,054.80.
All right. Thank you. All right. Number three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing. This is for the 2016 turf maintenance equipment.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any objections or support on five?
There were none.
None. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item? Going a second time.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is closed.
I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion on these items, counsel? All right. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right.
I move to approve an authorization, resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move to receive and file, instruct the City Clerk to read the bids, and refer to Leisure Services for review.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I'm actually not going to read every single option. They are available in the Clerk's office or online. But we did receive two bids. The first one from Vanwall Equipment, and the second one from P&amp;K Midwest. There's, I don't know, a good 15 options here, so I won't read each, the price for each one of them, but they are online and available in my office. See them.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to adopt a resolution awarding the bids for both of those people? Okay. A resolution awarding bids in the amount of $134,614 to Vanwall Equipment, Inc. of Urbendell, Iowa, for the purchase of one John Deere ProGator 300-gallon sprayer, one Buffalo Turbine BT Mega Debris Blower, one John Deere 1580 Terrain Cut Mower, one John Deere 60-inch Snow Blade, one John Deere 60-inch Snow Blower, one John Deere Z970R Zero Turn Mower, one John Deere Gator XUV, and one John Deere 2653B Utility Mower, and the amount of $34,184 to P&amp;K Midwest of Waterloo, Iowa, for the purchase of one John Deere 1580 Terrain Cut Mower and one TechTight Cab for John Deere 1580 Terrain Cut Mower.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion? That's a roll call. Roll call vote?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. The motion carries. Could someone take the first three?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to match construction of Sumner, Iowa, in the amount of $263,629, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the Leisure Services Chemical Storage Building project, and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said documents. And number five, a resolution approving and accepting certain donated feed title acquisition and accepting certain deed to sell real property to the city of Waterloo from Lost Island Real Estate LC for the acquisition of native property for East Shawless Road Recreational Trail, parentheses, TAP-U-8155, parentheses, 741, parentheses, 81-70, parentheses, located near the northwest corner of East Shawless Road and Hess Road. And number six, a resolution approving an amendment to original acquisition contract between the city of Waterloo and Grady Farms Dairy Incorporated in conjunction with the West Shawless Road Extension Project to compensate owner an additional $21,217.54 for the additional tiling work done in their adjacent farm field to alleviate water issues.
Second.
All right. All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion about these items from anyone? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Can we take items numbers seven and eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number seven is a resolution approving the request by Deer Creek Development LLC for the forelot, final plat of Greenbelt Center, plat number seven, located at northwest corner of Greyhound Drive and Sargent Road. And item eight is adopting a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Chive Hattery Architect and Engineering in the amount of $4,500 to prepare an ICAP grant for intersection of Ainsborough Avenue and Downing Avenue, including required studies for adding a lane to Ainsborough Avenue from Blackhawk Road to University Avenue, and authorize Mayor to execute said agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Question?
Yes, on number eight, John Sherbin, 1715, Robin Road. I had the pleasure of coming down Ainsborough again today, and the light at Downing was red, and it proceeded to back the traffic up clear past the, over a block back on the south side. So, in other words, the road was open from Ainsborough to Downing with no other traffic. So, in other words, the road was open from Ainsborough to Downing with no other traffic. And I sat there and waited until the light turned and then I got up to the intersection of Ainsborough, to University and it turned red and that stopped everybody again. First, I was talking to him a little earlier, just the same thing. This time it was on the other side. Ambulance left Ainsborough Station, or, yeah, Ainsborough. The traffic was backed from University Avenue to Downing. So the ambulance had to go up the left side, pass both lanes. Normally what happens is people panic when they see the ambulance, there's something coming and it'll pull out in front of the ambulance or cause other problems. I can't see why we'd spend $4,500. Why not just turn the light back where it was last summer, possibly? And the traffic flowed better. You know, we've got to stop. It stops one side of the traffic and lets the other side go, a block off of one of the busiest intersections in Waterloo. And it's been a problem ever since the light was cycled and changed over to the other one. Why we need $4,500 to fix something that doesn't seem to be need fixed? It just needs to have the lights turned back the way they were. And the one on, on Blackhawk is already three lanes on one side of the road and the traffic doesn't back up, except the light never changes. That's probably one of the slowest lights as far as getting off of Blackhawk onto Ainsborough. So a couple adjustments and people stand down there and watch that would probably always save us $4,500 bucks. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I have to mimic John's comments and also the aspect of why not change that signal back to where it was or change it to a indication of somebody coming off of Downing from either direction and then it changes the light. When this light was originally there, before they timed it two or three times, re-timed it two or three times, I didn't see any problems. I didn't see any ambulance problems, fire, fire truck problems, or all the backup that John says. And it seems to me kind of ridiculous to have three necessary stoplights in two blocks. You know, it's causing a problem that doesn't seem to me to need $4,500 for somebody else to tell you what we can. Thank you.
Sandy, just a quick question. Just two things. Well, one, there's been changes over the course of the last year or so. And then can you just talk a little bit about what this grant, what this grant will do as well?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent Traffic Operations. The reason that we started this to begin with is we got a traffic safety grant because there were many crashes at this intersection, a lot of rear end crashes and left turn crashes. We were awarded a grant to make improvements. This is a short-term improvement. We have gone out and re-time signals. We're working with the fire department on this. We have turned them to free time, which means Downing will stay red until they hit a call. We have adjusted timing. We've been out there counting traffic. This, this agreement that we're hoping that you pass will in turn do another study to put in that lane to allow left turn, protected left turns off of Ainsborough onto Downing. The reason signals are there is because of the congestion and signals are not put in unless they're warranted. Legally, we cannot put them in unless they're warranted. So right now we have a short-term, hopefully. And if the agreement goes through and we are awarded an ICAP grant, then a design, everything will be brought back to council before, before it's implemented.
So this, this will focus is on somewhat helping alleviate and take a different perspective of how we deal with this area?
Yes, and it does get congested at your peak hours, which are 5:00 at night, noon, and many, many signalized intersections in town are that way.
So Sandy, if I read this correctly, they're talking about adding a lane from Blackhawk to Downing?
Yes, it would be like a center line.
To what I would call northbound, I guess, heading towards Deer. So to add another lane in there, isn't that going to take some substantial parking out of those businesses on that side of Ainsborough? I mean, is that feasible?
Right now, we're working with planning and engineering on that. And no, it won't take, from what we have right now, from what we figured, maybe a space or two. We don't need a lot of room.
But the comments we've heard, and these aren't the first time we've heard these comments at Downing and Ainsborough, this is going to help alleviate that? Because I thought, I thought that issue had more to do with the traffic in front of the fire department, which would be southbound on Ainsborough. I thought. Is that accurate? I don't, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I thought, I thought that had been the complaint.
And I believe that was the complaint. We are also changing timing on University Avenue to help with Downing. And we can do that computer-wise, that, that we go out and watch.
So we, so we've done some things to try to, try to tweak that. But any change that's made is going to come back before the council?
Oh, definitely, because you'll have to approve it.
Okay.
We would have a work session to explain everything.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, let's take number nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Resolution approving a development agreement between Taylor Ventures, LLC and the city of Waterloo for the construction of a 7,600 square foot medical office building in the San Martin Tiff District, adding $1,335,000 of taxable value to site and offering four years of 95% tax rebates and three years of 94% and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And Noel, could you clarify what you sent to us by email, which, thank you very much, that was very detailed. The bottom line is, we're following the policy for acquisitions out there, for development agreements out there, the Tiff. And this, this tax rebate will cover the price of the land.
Noel Anderson, committee planning and development director. That's exactly correct. I mean, what the policy set up is, is to do is to reimburse them for the cost of the land that they're buying ahead of time for the project through the tax rebates to be gained. And of course, that's how we calculate out what that percentage is and how many years it is. And I would just note, one of the other things that was in the response email, in that same time period, the city will still gain $74,523 in taxes from the project, about $21,000 to the Tiff District and about $55,000 to the debt service levy. So again, these projects are helping us by getting new construction, getting new employees, helping existing businesses expand and, and grow in the city of Waterloo. We're also gaining money into the Tiff Districts, even with them getting rebates back to help them for their investment. And that money in the Tiff District helps us grow the Tiff District, put more infrastructure in there. The money going to the debt service obviously helps to pay off the city's debt, which helps keep the levy and the general fund from having to cover that.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the SWPPP and SPCC plan for the city of Waterloo Public Works, as submitted by Watersmith Engineering of Muscatine, Iowa, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, can someone take number 11, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number 11 is a motion received, filed, considered and passed for the third time and adopting ordinance, amendment ordinance number 5079, as amended, city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property. And as for the request by Tom Taylor for a site plan amendment to the R4RP Plan Residence District to allow for the construction of a 7,600 square foot veterinary clinic with an outdoor dog exercise area located to the south of 4015 Hurst Drive.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions lastly about this one? We've had it a couple weeks. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Someone take number 12?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion received, filed, considered and passed for the first time in ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by amending section 553. No parking here to corner in that subsection, 122A, Vincent Road to section 553. No parking here to corner.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any, any questions about this item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion and consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
We have it. Number 13.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion received, filed, considered and passed for the first time in ordinance amending the 20, or 2008 traffic code by deleting subsection 31 Downing Avenue to section 553. No parking here to corner and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection 31 Downing Avenue to section 553. No parking here to corner, south side in the 900 block in a westerly direction from Ainsborough Avenue and south side in the 800 block in the easterly direction from Ainsborough Avenue.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
She's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Number 14.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by amending subsection 551. Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets by deleting subsection 13614W in its entirety and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection 13614W to subsection 551. Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, southwest side from Bluff to Jefferson. Ordinance number 327751684. And east side from Blackhawk Street to Commercial Street.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions? Don't be done. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
She's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?